Calling the meeting to order. It is five after six. Sorry, we're late. Um, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You say that for both.
Okay, um, we have nothing to talk about. We're in a closed session. Um, I am opening a public hearing, Contract Reopeners with California School Employees Association, CSCA, Chapter 212, and a pedanticity elementary at Penrose Joint Union High School Districts for 2019 through 2022 school years. Hi. Howdy. And you're here.
Good evening, board members and members of the audience. My name is Loretta Cruz-Maggi, and I'm the president of the classified unit here at PCSCA. I wanted to let you know that we believe addressing minimum wage should be done fairly by lifting wages for all of our people, and we hope the board is supportive and recognizes that supporting quality wages helps ensure quality education for students because this will help with retention, recruitment of employees, and creates stability in our classified workforce. I also wanted to make a note that on the employment report tonight for classified folks that are just newly hired, there's some more people that have been moved before or something. There are eight people, two were hired at B-step, one at C, one at D, and four at F. Not one at A, which has been a trend for the last three years. We have to offer the higher steps in order to get people. Thank you.
Okay, I need some guidance here. Do I close the public?
Any other public comments?
Any other comments? Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. We're moving on. Number six, adoption and approval of the agenda for October 8th, 2019.
I'm going to approve.
Any comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Very good. And now on to special recognitions, student reports to the board. We will start with McNair Elementary. Could you turn that just a second? Yeah. Thank you. Perfect.
Hi, I'm Chloe.
Hi, I'm Spencer.
Hi, I'm Kayla.
Hi, I'm Asher. Thank you for letting us come and present to you about McNair School.
TK this year is starting to learn about the seven continents. Kindergarten is learning about the toolbox tools, which are tools you can use if you're sad, mad, or having any other feelings. They also learn about the zones of regulation, which are the color you are feeling. They're learning their numbers and letters and about the grade outdoors. And these grades is when they will start learning about life skills like taking turns, sharing, caring for each other, and being good students. First grade is learning about lights and shadows and friendship. They're practicing their reading skills and solving problems in math. Second grade is learning about the growth mindset and about the brain. They're practicing their reading strategies and how to write complete sentences.
Third grade is learning about weather, mindsets, animals, multiplication, and division, and the wonderful Native Americans. Fourth grade is learning about wetlands, California, building bridges out of popsicles sticks, and going on many trips such as walking trips every Friday and going to Gold Country. Fifth grade is learning about the Mark Reserve and working on the state reports.
This year, the sixth grade classes have just started CPN Math, and they are going to do K-Board Diaramas and learning about the early continents. Every month, they are doing book reports, and later this year, they'll be learning about great gods and ancient civilizations.
In garden, we grow and learn about plants. Sometimes, we even get to do a fun activity. We get to make snacks with the fresh fruits and vegetables we grow and have two wonderful garden teachers named Julia and Catherine. This week, we have been drying and eating zucchini chips. In the creek restoration, we cleaned out some of the invasive ivy and got STRA to come in and help us with the creek restoration process. STRA stands for Students and Teachers Restoring a Watershed. At McNair, we love doing art. We have art docents who will come in to either our classrooms or the math room and teach art to us. Sometimes, they will even teach us the history behind the art we're doing.
Um, in the math rooms where our class is going to do art and also after-school activities, some of which are robotics and Legos. We also just recently have got a 3D printer.
In the library, we have a wonderful librarian named Carly. Every week, she reads us a story or part of a story and lets us go into the library and pick a book we like to check out and bring home for that week. Twice a year, we have a book fair that goes for one whole school week where we can purchase books. Um, on the very last day, Friday, in the evening, you can come with your families, purchase books, and get free dessert.
Performing arts is an after-school activity where you can sign up in the great plays Donnie Frank and Southdus with. Every school year, there are two plays, one for the primary grades and one for the upper grades.
In McNair, we have a lot of traditions. Some are the back school barbecue, harvest festival, Elder Day, Earth Day, and Cinco de Mayo.
There is a jog-a-thon every year where students will run and raise money for our school. The jog-a-thon was happening about two weeks, and that was really exciting. We're also, we'll wear matching shirts and take them, to take them on.
McNair has gone on many field trips throughout the years, and every class and every grade goes on at least three field trips a year. We just got back from sixth grade camp where we hiked, bonded with our friends, went to a beach and saw whales, went to the marine mammal center and saw seals who were hurt but are getting help to get back to full health and later be released into their habitat. We even walked to a lighthouse from the early 1900s.
Thank you for listening to our McNair school presentation.
Thank you for presenting. Good job, Jen. Valley Vista, you're up.
Good evening, my name is Ricardo, and this is Ella, our sixth graders at Valley Vista, and we'd like to share some of the latest happenings on our campus.
Our sixth group had three days and two nights at Point Bonita last week. It was a great trip. There were great views, and you could see the Golden Gate Bridge. The ocean was beautiful. We played a game called Wave Town. We had break time when we could relax from hiking. We played basketball, gaga ball, or we could sleep, or shower, or just relax. Some groups had marched on the beach or on top of the hill. It was hard to do solo hikes and learn things with their joke groups.
Last week and this week, Mrs. Chambers and Mr. P are gardening in Richmond's, Richmond teachers are serving salad bar during lunch. We have five different types of cucumbers, six different tomatoes, and lots of lettuce. The students have loved the fresh vegetables. They've grown themselves.
On Saturday, our PTA hosted Chuck-a-palooza, and we had pancakes and over a dozen trucks of vehicles on campus for $10 a plate. The vehicles to explore included a city bus, a race car, dump trucks, loaders, a log splitter, a tow truck, and more. Our library coordinator, Mrs. Torbit, had the book fair open, and Clifford the Big Red Dog was all over campus and high in the families. We raised money for our PTA, and the library had a great day. Our book fair is open Tuesday to Friday this week if you want to stop by.
This Friday is the fourth and fifth grade bike rodeo brought to our campus by Safe Routes to School. Last year's pictures will give you a taste of the day. Kids bring their bikes to ride or borrow one. There's a bike mechanic on site to make repairs to the bikes in need. We ride obstacle courses, pretend city street, and do some maneuvering on our bikes for balance and stability. Last year was a lot of fun. We're glad the fourth and fifth graders can get to the spirit set like we did.
You're going to hear more about international baccalaureate from Mrs. Haugham later. We'll just say now that all teachers will be starting a unit inquiry this fall. Mrs. Haugham awards red ribbons at each weekly assembly for traits from the learner profile.
Finally, if you ever want to know more about what's happening at our school, you can watch the week in review that Miss Haugham creates every Saturday. Here's last week's to give you an example.
Last but not least, our Dia de las Mirillas display will be up on November 1st. It was an awesome celebration of life, memories, and loved ones that we are excited to experience again. The display will be on the front lawn, so feel free to stop by on Friday, November 1st. Here's a picture of our seniors standing at.
Thank you. Is Kenwood in the house?
Hello, I'm Maitland Spear. I'm an eighth grade leadership, ASB leadership student, and I am here to tell everyone about the amazing things going on at Kennelworth. It's been a great start to the school year. We had a successful orientation for Kennelworth on August 7th, which fun fact was my birthday. Many excited students came to get their pictures taken, get their schedules, and do a walk-through before the school year began. About 900 students are enrolled at KJHS. Teachers participated in a staff development, PD day focusing on ELD shifts and equity in education through facilitated discussion by seeds of awareness. Back to, back to school night took place on September 5th. Parents, parents enjoyed seeing the school through their kids' eyes. Leadership students such as myself showed families around the classrooms. Their students attended after Mr. Hawley and Mr. Orlinghaus said their opening remarks in the multie. Spirit Days are very popular this year. We had tie dye day, two black and gold days, Hawaiian Day, and a wear pink for breast cancer awareness. They're all very big hits, especially Paint Day, which I could tell was the school's favorite this year and last. Students are learning about lunchtime activities. They're also learning about extracurriculars such as a variety of clubs, intermural sport offerings, and ASB events such as some leadership students running for presidents. The seventh graders enjoyed their first icebreaker dance at KJHS on September 6th. The seventh graders really had a lot of fun with it and were not so awkward like my class was last year. Students have been collecting money for PTSD pledge-a-thon. The pledge-a-thon party is this Friday, October 11th. So far, we have raised over $22,000, and the donations keep coming in. The money is used to supplement our academic and athletic programs. A lot of students are taking advantage of our after-school homework club program, especially after the first grading period grades have come out. This is a great place to go to work on your homework because the teachers there can help you with any subject you're working on or having trouble in. Now let's talk about our athletics. Our athletic, our athletic seasons are flying by. Before we know it, our cross-country and girls' basketball seasons will be over. Students are learning valuable life lessons while participating in these activities such as responsibility and teamwork. Our assistant principal, Mr. Orlinghaus, has given a VAP presentation to all students at KJHS through PE classes. The presentation consisted of the serious health effects and overall consequences one receives when they make the decisions to participate in vaping or doing drugs. It was a very important topic that I personally am very glad we all went over, especially the seventh graders so they would learn what dangers are there if they start doing it. KJHS started our life skill lessons focusing on Kennelworth Junior High School's visioning acronym CARES, which stands for creativity, accountability, respect, empathy, and success. These lessons take place one to two times per month during SSR. This is a great time to be a Kennelworth poll.
Now, Kennelworth Junior.
Hi, my name is Jordan Beardsley, and I'm an eighth grade student at KJHS.
My name is Brady Cabo. I am a seventh grade student at KJHS.
KJHS events.
Our, I'm sorry. Our first year outing went special dance. It was really funny. Had a lot of different activities that went on.
We also got the vaping education presentation, which taught us all about the dangers of doing drugs and vaping.
The back-to-school dance for sixth and seventh graders was really funny. It had a tropical theme, and it was really nice.
The assembly with Matt Bellis, where he taught us all some really fun activities while teaching us all about his new book that he wrote.
The second graders running for officer is the thing that we do.
Our last two students of the month were awarded with their, Brett and Ava.
Kindness Week was a week where we had a bunch of different activities going on each day, and there was a theme. And one of the one-off items was the kindness bingo, where you had to go around and do five different conversation starters. And if you won, then you got a cookie and your box and a kindness, your kindness card, and you got your name put in the bin, and if you got drawn, then you won it in a coupon.
International Walk and Roll to School Day. So, um, for a whole day, students on campus walked and rolled to school to encourage other students and their parents to use non-motorized ways to get around.
Uh, the authors, Alec Conti and Braggadeggs, visited KJHS a few days ago, and they taught us all about their new book, The Beast, which is the second part in the series of The Dark Deep, and it was a really, it was a really interesting book. I actually purchased the book, and it sounds really good. Everybody's starting to read it.
So what's happening in class? So in science, we had the Mini-Metric Olympics in science to kick off the first, our year.
We had the vocabulary. It's in history.
Integer Wars in math.
Learning about the 13 colonies in history.
Reading masterpieces in art class.
Making a McNugget in culinary art in class.
And students in the library using the Maker Space at lunch, where you can use all sorts of materials to make anything you want.
Learning the games of PE.
And Tech Tuesdays in the library after school has also been very popular, where our librarian teaches students about all different types of technology. In sports. Oh, the cross-country team had their, one of their meets at Putnam Park, and they hosted Cloverdale in Calistoga, and they totally dominated the competition with girls winning five out of the six spots and boys placing nine, or crossing nine out of the first 10 runners to the finish line.
The eighth grader girls had a week off last week, but the seventh graders won 25 to nine over Windsor.
That's our presentation. Thank you.
We have one more presentation, and we'll take a short break. And that is about international baccalaureate.
I didn't expect we'd be before the break, so they're probably not going to get here till 6:30.
They're coming right now. It's a good job.
Okay. I know. Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. We were chugging along. Okay. Perfect timing. Um, so we're going to introduce ourselves, and we're going to jump right in. For many of you, this, this could be the first that you've heard about the program we're developing at Valley Vista, for those of you who've visited and know more. It's really difficult to consolidate ID into anything remotely like an elevator pitch. So we're going to attempt to give you the big pieces, and then when you come and visit, you'll put it together, which will see the work. Uh, so Jen, are we in here? Yes, let's introduce ourselves.
I'm Jennifer Orlinghaus. I, my official title is International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program Coordinator. And.
Spanish teacher.
I'm Patty Litibus, and I'm RSP, the Resource Specialist Teacher at Valley Vista.
I'm Jenna Ackman. My title is much smaller. We're a great teacher.
Okay, so we were trying to recreate the timeline of how we began investigating becoming ID, and we've had really strong support from the school board all along since we started in January, I guess it was. And so thank you all for your continued ongoing support. We had a staff meeting where it was a shared decision if we were, wanted to proceed with it, and everybody got to say if they supported it or if they had concerns. So then, since we had so much buy-in, uh, our staff got to go and visit a school in Napa called Belle Air Park and observe how they're doing their ID stuff. Then, Mrs. Haugham did the application to become a candidate school. And after that, we got that approved, then my job got created. And we got approval for candidacy. February of 2018, and basically have implemented the program starting school year 2018, 19, and hoping going forward with it. All the teachers have taught their first unit of inquiry, and we're now up to at least two minimum this year, and we're going to keep adding on. Let's, oh, I get to go to my first workshop, my in-person workshop. It's called The Role of the Coordinator. And so now I get to find out what my job really is. What else? It, are we, Mrs. Haugham created an action plan. It's a big online document through the ID, and it's in excellent shape. So it looks like we're expecting to apply for authorization this spring, which would mean a committee from ID would come and visit us, we think, in the fall of next year to give us authorization. And we got our first request for another school to come and observe us. It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, we're very excited. Yeah. So a little bit of background, this is just where international baccalaureate schools are located around the country. Obviously, it's a global program. Another way to look at where things are located, so the Americas are very well represented here. The diploma program, the DP program, is what most people are most familiar with. It's an alternative track to AP in high schools. Montgomery High School's an example of this. So if you bring up ID, you might see someone sort of melting into, oh my gosh, I had to write all these essays. The program is very rigorous. The middle-year program got developed later, so ID started with their diploma program. Then they brought it back to their middle-year program, and PYP is what we're doing. It came about in the 90s, so it's relatively young, but has spread like wildfire because it's such an amazing way to approach curriculum and teaching and learning.
Okay, so all of the ID schools worldwide operate under the same policies and procedures where we're guiding students international-minded, um, with like a global view, culturally aware, and to have, be aware of the 10 learner profile traits, which is coming up in a later slide.
Jen, Jen, your favorite. I know my favorite slide.
So this is kind of an analogy of how it feels really in the beginning with ID. So we've got these men, and they can't see, they're feeling different parts of the elephant. They're saying, you know, like the guy holding the trunk is, I think I've got a snake, and the guy holding the legs, I think I've got a tree. They can't have, they're not really sure how it all fits together. And as a teacher, last year, writing our, my first unit, I really felt like, okay, like, I think I've got this. I wrote the unit with a colleague. I go into the classroom, I deliver it, and that's kind of when you really start seeing everything unfold, and that's the exciting part of it all. Trying to figure it all out is very complicated. It's, feels very uncomfortable, but as soon as you bring it into the classroom and you start executing it, you start seeing kids who are usually reluctant learners get excited about what they're learning and excited to talk about it, and it really is very satisfying. So it's complicated, and there's lots of different parts, but once you see it come to fruition, fruition in the classroom, it's really pretty cool. This is the ID logo, and I think the most important part when I look at this is just the center, because everything kind of swirls around the center with that word, agency. And it really is about, as a teacher, giving students agency in their learning, giving them voice, giving them choice and ownership of their learning, and really letting them and allowing them to guide the direction that the unit is going. So when we're thinking about what is ID, but those of you that haven't heard about this before, to understand is to think about what it's not. It's really not a replacement for standards. We're not giving, it's not books, it's not materials, it's not curriculum. What it is, it's an approach, and it is, it's constructive, constructivist, it's standards-based, and it's action-oriented. So we're not replacing curriculum. We're actually creating curriculum that's supporting the standards. And traditionally, school is looked at as disciplinary. That's the word that we have. And you're looking at it as, these are different silos. So we've got the math silo, the history, the reading, the different silos. Sometimes, we take that approach to multidisciplinary, so we're like, okay, well, I can do social studies and I can do language arts together. Well, what international baccalaureate is, it's transdisciplinary. So we're not just saying, oh yeah, that's right, I can use this in language arts, or remember, we were thinking about that when we were doing Social Studies, that book that we were reading. Everything is incorporated all together. And right now, teachers are creating thematic units that have everything, with the exception of some math, that they're even trying to incorporate that into that. So the students are learning about all the disciplines all the time. It's all incorporated. So it really reinforces their learning in so many different ways.
So a more concrete example of that, ID has six themes, and those six themes encompass the unit of, excuse me, the year of teaching and learning. One of the themes is who we are. And so when you think of who we are, subjects come to mind, topics come to mind. A few of those might be deeds, right? We might talk about, oh, I'm sorry. Scratch that. No, it's subjects. I've got it. That's right. Chemistry, heat transfer, right? Who we are as humans. The fourth and fifth grade put together a unit last year. It was actions cause reactions, and they were looking at social actions and reactions, right? Pay it forward kind of activities. They were looking at heat transfer. They realized their students, they couldn't really count on their students having a firm grasp of simple machines. It would have been done in a younger grade, so they had to do some mini lessons about simple machines. They did a lot of reading about people in our world that have done things that have caused a domino effect. So you can already hear the science, the reading, the history, the writing, the research, it's all together. And all the subjects get brought together. And all the subjects get brought together. ID expects to spend about 80% of your day in the unit of inquiry. So if you're a first grader, you've still got discrete reading instruction. That isn't going anywhere. We're not embedding that. We're not hoping osmosis creates readers, right? We're still doing a lot of discrete instruction. Mathematics, too, is going to maintain its subject area until and when it fits the unit of study authentically. So they began looking at all the standards that are in 4th and 5th grade that fit this notion, right? It's a lot of backward planning. Math, we have learned through Jen doing some research, us really talking to a lot of ID communities, it doesn't have to be completely embedded, right? Just because we're talking about plants doesn't mean we're now adding geraniums and adding poppies. It's not authentic, right? It needs to fit the subject. So if it doesn't fit, then math can remain on the side. This is an example of students doing some research. They're reading about Ruth Goldberg. They're learning about those simple machines while they're reading about action and reaction in society, political movement, all things that are tied to their standards, right? We're very mindful of what 4th and 5th graders need to learn. The culminating activity here was building their own Ruth Goldberg machine. So as the unit progressed, the rooms were a total disaster most of the time. But they bring out their machines and as the weeks went by, their vocabulary and their ability to describe what's happening, the transfer of energy, the kind of lever, the kind of pulley, and requirements for all the things it needed to contain, really kept them motivated and moving forward. Another example's in 1st and 2nd grade, under their theme of How the World Works, one of the six. Living Things Adapt and Change, right? That's animal adaptation, that's Petaluma, right? We used to be agricultural, we're not agricultural anymore, and yet I still see farms around, so that's interesting. We're changing over time. They did a chart just to figure out, what is a living thing, right? What is the difference? This chart, you can see sort of a trend here, gummy worm, earthworm. Then we had the class pet, goldfish, and then goldfish crackers, right? So we went through all of the descriptors of the characteristics of living things. They did some writing about it, right? And all of these things here on the left are the standards-based lessons built, right? Inquiry is a big part of ID. And so we use this visual quite a bit that Patty's going to drive for you.
So we're not going to expect all kids to be able to have those inquiry skills. Some kids have them innately. So we're looking at, this is a great model, if you could start off with structured inquiry, you might have it controlled where they're learning a little bit more. We want to get them to the free inquiry part, so we're guiding them along the way. So at the beginning, the teacher's leading it, and then the teacher's gradually pulling back as they develop those skills of self-inquiry.
So our new ELA curriculum in TK through 5th wonders has some inquiry already as part of the program. This would be considered guided inquiry. So they're asking a question, they're putting up their ideas, and then we're guiding them through a story and experience to answer those, right? We're holding their hand all along the way. But in our 2nd and 3rd grade unit, Geography Influences How We Work, Live, and Play, at a certain point in the unit, we said to students, so where in the world do you want to investigate now? Do you want to learn about the tundra? Do you want to learn about the desert? We have all the materials there to support them. We might have done a buddy activity if the research was more than they could do independently, but we're slowly giving them that agency to look in their interest. For the teacher, if the student's questions and interests fall under the umbrella of the central idea, then you go with them. Your agenda does not trump what's happening in the classroom that day. You have lessons that you have to deliver, but if they're taking a right turn and it fits the central idea, you're going to take that right turn with them. We did end up raising some chicks as our how we adapt to our environment, so that hands-on part. We had an actual farmer come in and talk about chicks and help us raise them up, and then we kindly asked our community, who needs a chicken? And then they got adopted away. Patty?
Oh, no, Jen. Yeah. So this is a big piece of work that the staff had to collaborate on TK and kindergarten, do a minimum of four units of inquiry, and all the other grades are six. And we all have the same topics that we start with, and we have to develop this so it aligns vertically and horizontally, and there's no repetition. But they're the same themes of study, and they grow progressively over the years. And this is, Katina created that beautiful display that's in our staff rooms, and next time on our campus, you can walk through. It's supposed to be very shared with the community, and eventually it's going up on our website. Perfect.
So one of the ways that we acknowledge the learner profile in the students is, we have red ribbons that we would give away at assemblies to students showing different characteristics. In the past, and now we've changed it so it's showing the learner profile. So students are acknowledged for risk-taking, being thinker. And we are going to be shifting that to students nominating other students. So if they see peers exhibiting those learner profiles, they nominate them for the red ribbon. And some of the different ways around campus that are showing, what's nice is the teachers can be creative with their students about how they're communicating with the learner profile is. So this is one of the ways, I think this is a 6th grade classroom, the students created that. This is a 5th grade classroom, and this is a 4th grade classroom, yeah. And the students are engaging and notarizing what they are seeing in themselves and in their peers. And then also, this is in the kindergarten classroom, which is really nice. What they've done is they have something really with strong visuals on there, they have a mirror, so like they can look up and see that they are that profile, which is really nice if they can personalize it that way. And then over time, the students' pictures get added as they're demonstrating each of the profiles.
Jen?
This is the most, oh, one of the most exciting parts about ID in Maryland is, we are required to have a second language of instruction. And everything else in their program is very regulated, and we have to follow their rules and their policies. But the language part is up to us, how we deliver it. We, no, there's one thing. Every student that's at least seven years and above has to have the second language. But we're including the TK and the kindergarten, and they are probably like the best ones.
As excited as I am about it. So there, we have, oh, selecting Spanish was also a shared decision, because there were some other languages mentioned. And so I'm still kind of navigating. We have a good percentage of our population that already speaks Spanish at home, but maybe they're not writing, or maybe they're not reading. And then we have kids that have never been exposed. So we have a lot of speaking, a lot of culture. It looks like Day of the Dead invitations have been handed out. Fantastic. That's samples of what we had last year. It was pretty fun.
It was really fun. All right, Jen?
So the PYP promotes international mindedness and is very action-oriented. So the international mindedness thing is, you know, when they're really little, we like to try to just focus on what's right, close, and near them, right? So the school, and then we build out to their city, and then we go to the region and the state, and then we really try to get them to think globally, like they are not the only people on the planet. And that, with that comes a lot of similarities and differences. For example, the unit that I'll be starting next month, or later this month, with my students is children are the same, or children around the world are the same and different. So we'll really be exploring children around the world, how are we the same, how are we different, and how are we the same and different even just within our classroom as well. Another way to think about it, too, is for living things that change and grow. Here, they're working on earthworm hotels, and we are, you know, kind of trying to guide them. The goal is to get the kids to ask the questions, things like, do earthworms live all over the world? That's what we're hoping that we'll hear them ask, and then we can start doing some investigating. I don't know, let's find that out. How can we figure that out? Another thing here, too, you can think, if you're looking at pollution and trash impacting the habitats of living things, we also want to kind of guide them in wondering, are we the only ones that have problems with that? Where is that happening? Let's inquire and investigate.
So we've mentioned a little bit about this before, the constructivist approach is having the curriculum follow the child. We're following the Common Core standards, but we're letting the child guide us through that. So we're seeing what's sparking the children's interest and providing them with the supports that they need to develop their learning, to develop their inquiry in that approach. And one of the ways that we did that this year was having, looking at how actions cause reactions. And some of the classrooms focused on helping the homeless, so they had inquiry about homeless people, what do they need, how can we help them? Another one was partnering with the Bird Rescue Center, so creating something that birds can use, selling them, getting money together, and then they're able to adopt some birds. And I think the photos are still in the classroom, so that they can still see birds if they adopt it here at the rescue center. And then another classroom created these tug ropes that helped people who have visual impairments, so through Kine companions, they were able to develop something that they can use, and can latch it on the door, and the dog can open the door. So they created those and they donated them to Kine companions.
Yeah, this classroom in particular, they had a pretty big debate going. Half the class wanted to support animals and half the class wanted to support veterans. And so they needed to do some research, right? Because 5th graders can research. And they found Kine companions that met most of those groups' needs. So that was perfect. And they had to write good donations for their belt, learn how to make the tug straps, they delivered them via field trip. So their actions had a definite reaction with others. So these are the things that won't change. And I just want to point out, and we are really almost done, I know, you've got to get going, you're making things long. You hear a lot of things that most teachers are doing, that lots of teachers are doing, right? But what sets this program apart is we must do it all. So when I taught 6th grade, I really tried to connect the dots for kids, because I know the stronger the schema in their learning, the better it's going to stick, the more they enjoy the process. But I wasn't in a position where I could do that constantly, 80% of my day. Here, and I'm sorry, but it's a lot of heavy lifting for the teacher, right? They do copious amounts of planning to kind of anticipate where it might go. And the directions they don't anticipate, they have to go there sometimes anyway. And we're still standards-based. We're using our district-adopted curriculum, which is very helpful. Some schools make their own curriculum. No, thank you. We still have accountability, we still follow the assessment benchmarks through the year, we still do our state testing, we still have a major commitment to our community and students. But it's this huge commitment to how we deliver and what we're expecting of students in return. Teachers feel tired, not because they're working harder than kids anymore, but because they have to kind of be ready. Like, where are we going today, right? It's really, really exciting to watch, and I hope that you will get ahold and come and visit if you have any questions. Yeah?
Where do you expect your families to go at the juvenile high school level and what they're going to demand in terms of the ID structure?
Yeah, when you look around at ID schools, in our region is where we've really been focusing, you see every kind of model, TK through 12. You see just high school. And you see a lot of San Jose and elementaries. And what we've learned from those schools is, while they're not necessarily feeding into another ID program, they're well-equipped for whatever's coming their way. And so that's been the message that we've been working with, that you will have this different kind of seven-year experience, right? Elementary, no, it's elementary can be eight years now with TK. It's going to set you up for whatever's coming next. We may decide to go ID in other schools of ours in the district, but, you know, we've got to get our feet under us, I think, before we get going there.
Have you seen in those other districts, families deliberately going to elsewhere to ID schools?
It's a geographic question. You know, they may not even have one close enough to go to. If we had high school students that wanted to pursue ID, they have to drive up to Santa Rosa every day. Not a deal breaker by any means, but it's a different kind of commitment for a family. Every region is very different. And a lot of ID elementaries are private, and so you might be staying the private route as opposed to the ID route, right? So very different. What we do expect, though, is probably in the next few years, you know, our students that are graduating out of 6th grade, they will need something different than Spanish 7A.
Sure.
And that is a definite expectation we have. We aren't per se, no one's going to be fluent by the time they leave, but they will have a very robust background, although they will not be able to learn the first and basic conjugation. That's exciting. Any other questions? All right, we'll see you all soon for a tour. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take about a five-minute break to let the littles go home, and we'll be back in like five, but...
Thank you, I appreciate that. Sorry to call in to your mom. All right. I'm leaving, too. Thanks.
Read through those 47 slides.
Were you nervous? Jen's like, this is stupid as life. No, come on, we got this.
That's never a silly thing.
All right, I'll see you tomorrow.
That's right.
We're talking title and...
See if you can help.
We're going to get it figured out. Confident.
Did they go back to school or did they take a break?
It's a break.
You know, have you got dinner?
I have no idea.
I was looking for a break. I think he was like, I, why would I get like...
That's pretty fast. I'd say that's pretty good for 47 slides. Thought, were you nervous?
Did you get your hair? It's really weird. Do you like it?
CSU, CSU, against the CSU president, and just the California Association also. But the REIT hearing, the trustees, apparently.
Is it just CSU?
Yeah, it's not UC, it's just a CSU. So it's actually going to be a part of...
I was going for the San...
Actually, we're a representative of CSU, but you have to perform higher than the UC.
No one ever says that.
We shall see.
I know, it's like, but I mean, that was...
Did not think it was a practice.
That was your point. Too long, that was too much.
It's hard to know.
See, I always do what the youths do.
Right.
Yeah.
You have these all the time.
She bought it.
She feels so lazy.
I love it.
I just want to hibernate.
Okay.
We're back in session. We have no comments from the public, so we move on to report on activities, of course, ones of the school board. We went to Casa Grande High School Digital Citizenship Workshop, a couple people did, and the Tracapalooza at Valley Vista, which was very fun. Okay, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
Oh, man.
Any questions?
Is it just CSU?
Yeah, is that crazy? It's not UC, it's just a CSU. So it's actually going to be a part of...
I was going for the San...
Yeah. Actually, we're representing this issue, but you're not using the performing type of the UC.
No one ever says that.
We shall see.
I know, it's like, I mean, it was... That was your point, I'm like, too long, that was too much data, I'm sure this didn't... It's hard, we know it already. We have to do without it. See, I always do what the youths do. Right? Yeah. Do you have people that are... I want to hibernate for the weekend. We have no comments from the public, so we move on to report on activities, of course, ones of the school board. We went to Casa Grande High School Digital Citizenship Workshop, a couple people did, and the Tracapalooza at Valley Vista, which was very fun. Okay, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. Oh, move. Any questions or comments before we vote? Pretty basic there. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Wow. Action items. Wait, do we have public comment yet? There is none. I have no yellow papers. Administration of Human Resources proposed tentative agreement to the collective bargaining agreement between Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Ming and High School Districts and the Petaluma Federation of Teachers' Adult Education, CFT and ACT, and approval of the 2019, 20, and 2020, 21 salary schedules. And a second. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I just want to comment, happy the disagreement along, I support it, but I am going to abstain, and I don't have to, but I'm going to abstain.
Okay, good. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye.
And one extension.
And one extension. Okay. Student Services Resolution Number 201910 in a matter of school classroom capacity limits for purposes of granting or denying an interdistrict transfer request.
So this is just, this is just more than plain language that the county recommends that all of our districts and the counties put in place, so that you are not being arbitrary and capricious when determining that you have, do not have space availability, that you've already determined what space availability is. So if you have an interdistrict transfer and you're not rejecting that, you're doing it on the basis of already pre-approved what is at capacity. This does not include charters, that's a whole different ballgame, but it includes interdistricts for the district.
Kind of takes the guesswork out of it.
Yeah, it makes it, it makes it clean. However, I will say that if you, if you, whatever you, it's permissive language, you may, doesn't mean you have to, because you could still take students. But if you said to a given student, and you were at capacity, you couldn't cherry pick students, at that point, you would be at capacity for all students that were going forward, as long as those enrollment numbers held. If that makes sense? We need to be as clean as possible with that, so.
Okay, all in favor? Do we move it into the...
I will move.
There you go. Aye, second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right. Future business? Oh my goodness. We just cruised right through this, didn't we?
We're just bringing, we'll be bringing back the, kind of encapsulating the board goals from the work that we did with the, with the community. You'll get some information that you can take with you today.
And then we'll be talking about it.
We'll talk about that in the next meeting.
Okay. Any other future business?
I still want to hear about recycling and waste management, and I know that power outages are one of the big priorities, but I'm going to keep asking if I was able to get it.
I like a woman who knows what she wants to know.
No one else does, but...
Okay, any other future business? So recycling and board goals.
Yep.
All right. Meeting adjourned.